Alrighty, it's four thirty. It started here. A roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here. George, you want to give us an indication?
Good, Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. And we just pray, Father, you be with us as we deliberate for the folks of Gracia County. For sinamie pray amen.
They have some flagellations.
I believe in to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, honor God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the flagellations.
So if we can add J five to add an airport meeting, so I can get that advertised. Because I think there's some things that need to be discussed about them. And then if we can add J six, the annual meeting resolution to set the annual meeting for September seventeenth. It falls, uh, September fifth is our next meeting. I won't have enough time to get it into the newspaper for the six day notice, so.
Will do that J six?
Yes.
Ready? Okay. All right, we need approval of the general with those changes.
Of support. Motion.
Motion.
That's for me.
Move support to adapt agenda. On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Want to public comment? We have the attorney here, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, um, and somebody was going to be here from DTE.
It was mine, I, I did notify DT of the meeting and it was my understanding that they would be able to address the issue. Uh, more, more so the, the PA one sixteen. Application, however, if there is not a representative DT, I think it would still be appropriate for the county to, uh, move forward with. Both items and I could assist.
Well, I thought was if, if this person got here that we would move you up to kind of get you in, just we'll wait a little bit and see if he gets here or she gets here.
Okay.
And then we'll move you up on the agenda, so you don't have to listen to all of this for the evening. We have you somewhere in the middle of this.
All right, I appreciate it. I'll at the, while you're doing that, I'll, I'll, uh, uh, see if I can text DT's counsel and see.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other brief public comment? Okay, consideration the consent count, anybody want to take anything out of there?
What was the consent calendar? Support.
Move support to accept the consent calendar, favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, we're now the administrative.
Okay, uh, the Veterans Advisory Committee is selecting candidates to interview for the director's position right now. Uh, we're on schedule to hopefully start some interviews late next week or early week following. Uh, when Sheila is back from vacation, uh, later this week. Uh, we will have a union negotiation update in closed session at the end of this. So if any topics come up where that might be, and I, you might want to ask a question about that, we're just going to hold off till the very end. And we're in closed session. Today we had our second community opioid resource team meeting. Uh, the first one that was officially sanctioned by this board. Um, we're very happy with our progress to date. Uh, today we identified about nine or ten services important to the community that Gracia County does not offer, or that the services. Within our county are difficult to get now. That doesn't mean that we will be bringing all of those options to you because some of them frankly cost two more than, than what we've been allotted within our lawsuit. But that was our goal today was to, uh, kind of put together a wish list. And from there, we're going to work on paring that down to something that is. Uh, not only affordable, but also sustainable for our residents. Um, since our last meeting, um, MSU has offered to do free community assessments. Uh, related to, uh, opioid resources and services within counties. Uh, the advisory groups that we met with today, uh, all was in favor of reaching out and asking them to perform one of those assessments. I have not had the time to do that yet to see, uh, what, what they offer, if there's different variations, but. Um, that will be the next step for this group is, is to see if we can't get a community assessment done to get some community input. On what they feel like could be improved.
Um, you have any idea how, how broad that'll be, how? Will they, will they talk about police or will they talk about? Things for kids or really, how, how broad that assessment will be? You, have you seen any of those?
I do not, I have not looked at them on the website. In fact, um, some of the members today were the ones that, uh, uh, tipped me off that it's available. Um, my understanding is that there are different types of assessments for different types of entities. Uh, so my plan is to reach out to MAC and ask them for their advice on what they think would be the best assessment for Gracia County. Um, and then ask MSU to make a, a, a. Written recommendation also that I can share with this group. And then let the, the stakeholders within our county make that decision, what, what best assessment they think would be for Gracia County. A lot of words for now, a lot of information.
Now, I don't know.
A lot of answers, really.
But that, my, my plan going forward is. To find the best one for us. Uh, last week, uh, members of the Blight Program, Bill Leonard and Deandra Messer and myself attended the Sumner Township Meeting. Uh, to help change, to help explain, uh, the Blight Program. To the, the township officers and supervisor out there. Um, it was, uh. Our, our appearance was very well received. Um, in fact, there were several other items on the agenda that we were able to discuss with them. Uh, such as their involvement in the community or the, the county master plan. And also, uh, their interest in the Parks and Rec Passage Grant that we, uh, award through our village every year. Our August staff potluck is next week. Uh, Terry's office, I believe, is kind of organizing, heading up and, and taking, um. Volunteers for that, it is on Thursday, the twenty fourth. Uh, I encourage any of the commissioners that are able to come in and say hello and say thank you and. Grab a bite to eat and I, I would love to see, um, as many of you that can be there as possible. Uh, I believe that the potluck will be set up in the, what is now used kind of for the waiting room for the veterans affairs. Uh, just outside the kitchenette area. Down at this end of the building.
So the inside, what is the time on that again?
The hot dogs outside though. Uh, we plan on having that at, at lunch hour, right? Yep, so. Uh, and we did hold our healthcare meeting with forty-four North. This past week, uh, with the committee did settle on an option, um, and we'll release some of those, that information in the future. Um, but what we did settle on does provide the same or better coverage for our employees at a lower rate. So, at least for this year with healthcare options, our, our employees, um, were fortunate. The county does pay what is considered the hard cap for healthcare, which that means there is a. Legislative amount that is set by the state of Michigan, if we opt into the hard cap, that we would pay up to a certain dollar amount. And that this year went up five percent. So while the county will be paying five percent more for their portion, um, employees will be fortunate and will not have to pay as much as they did last year. So, uh, it's going to do for our employees. And that is my administrator update.
Well, I have two.
Worst thing, uh, you said there was a vacancy, your name's John.
About, yep, the Veterans Affairs Director.
Very good.
I have two questions, one is, can we have an update on the audit?
Mm-hmm, yeah, uh, in fact, just, uh, yesterday and today, we, uh. Yo and yo started reviewing some of the work papers that we had submitted. Um, so Becky has been working with them for a couple of days, I think. Terry's office has been in contact with them, if Terry's office wasn't, I know their contractor was from Woodhill Group. Um, there was another misunderstanding where some files did not get uploaded and so that got taken care of. Um, so, last time I updated you, we did not know when yo and yo was going to be able to start reviewing some of this stuff. And as of this week, they are looking to review it.
Okay, and then I also have another question, uh, we have a guest coming from Germany, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. Can you give me an update on that?
Yes, uh, right now, um, while Stephanie would be best, or Sheila would be best, uh, to update you on that, but. What we are doing right now is we are talking with some of our community members to, to get together some of the funding for that. Uh, Sheila is working on putting together a, of. An agenda for them, um, an itinerary, uh, and, uh. From what I know, uh, I am, I am now in charge of the, the grill out, so you will not be on the hook for.
There you go.
Uh, grilling for the German delegation this year, but I know, I think.
Great, hard.
I hope not, because Saturday, Saturday is the day that we're having the pool day and grill out. Um, it will be, uh, my brother in laws, thank you, Todd, for hosting that. Uh, before that, they're going to be going to the Alma football game.
Oh.
So, um, they'll be going to the football game, then, then having a, a post grill out instead of, uh, pregame grill out.
Okay, and then where are they staying?
Uh, I believe they're going to be staying at the same bed and breakfast.
Okay, one of the things is, I think, George, you've been to Germany, haven't you, with the, one of the, one of the backgrounds on this is that we are probably one of the last counties in the United States that has a sister county. And so, uh, the last time, there was three of us, um, that went, Tom Steer, who has passed away, excuse me, and Tom Cooper and myself. And, uh, when we went there, this, the, a couple of years ago, I mean, they paid for everything, our hotel, they paid for all of our food. And it was quite a, quite a ceremony to have us there. So I'd like to, so, I'd be more than happy to donate a hundred dollars towards this, I'll write a check out and give it to you.
Okay.
And, uh, but I think also I'd like to see the county contribute some kind of money with that. Since we are one of the last of the county, um, that is, uh, has a sister county and really do a nice job on this, but that's my feeling, I, and I. Sam, did you ever go to Germany? I thought you.
I've been asked a couple of times, I didn't know.
You didn't know? I know there's been several that had gone.
My daughter did, my daughter.
Your daughter?
My, I participated years ago in the exchange program.
Okay, but I don't know, maybe you guys don't feel the same way I do too, so, but I do want to donate some money on it.
Well, I know, I have story that the county would allow the driver to use a county gas card. That was years and years ago.
Okay.
And if you want to, maybe it'd be best to bring this back up when we get to the budget portion of our discussion today.
Okay, we could do that.
You can kind of punt that one down the line for a little bit. Um. No, that would be great, I appreciate that, and I.
That'd be fine.
I, I do know that, uh, Sheila has even, um, she's, she's gotten a letter from the governor also welcoming, welcoming them.
Okay.
And thanking them for, uh, this twenty-five year partnership that we've had, so I thought that was a very nice touch also.
Yeah.
It's a surprise also, hopefully they're now watching.
I know, the last time they came, it was kind of like, we had COVID nineteen and, and the, um. Can I tell you, his last name, first name is Christopher, who was in charge of it, became ill, we had to call an ambulance. And it seemed, and he had plans to go to Washington DC, but couldn't go at the last minute because of his illness. So there was quite a bit of, um, turmoil there, so I'd like to see a better, uh, program put together if that's possible, and I'd be more than happy to help.
Well, I, I can guarantee you that, uh, Sheila is going to put together one heck of a program.
Yeah.
Or she has, and I'm sure that it's getting passed around right now.
Oh, that's nice, I didn't realize that's what she was coming in for.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll write you a check day two for this.
Anything else, any other questions for Chris? Alrighty. The IT report, you just see that in your agenda there. Um, Commissioner Committee reports.
Um. Had a few meetings, uh, went to Hamilton Township, North Star Township. Um, I didn't have a commission on AG meeting because I have attended two union negotiations during this time period. Um, and we'll hear about that later. Um, and, uh. Mental Health Board attended that meeting. Uh, mental health is struggling right now because of the funding sources. Uh, they'll be made whole at the end of the fiscal year, but the funding sources have been, uh. Sorely, sorely lacking because of COVID. The numbers were way down during the COVID process, and that's how. The entities are paid. And so we're about one point two million dollars in the hole. But that'll be made up at the end of the, end of the budget year, so. No worries, it's just one of those things that we don't get all the funding upfront. That's, thanks for going up.
How much are they short, one million, a lot?
One point two million.
Wow.
Yep.
Oh, I, I didn't go, uh, anyplace, I was dealing with family, however, um. My wife, like, uh, possibly go through the process of being on the board of the commission on AG.
That would be nice.
David?
Well, I went to Alma last week, oh, great shakes there. MMR last week. Pretty much the same there, they talk about the, um. Satisfaction of the people. Put the ride in the ambulance. Then I went to Seville, they were talking about marijuana and bit of a dust up between, um, planning commission chairman and the supervisor. Apparently are not on the same page on marijuana.
What's new, what's new in Seville Township one and two?
Well, they had a, a guy there from Coleman, he wanted to open a dispensary on forty-six. And.
But no, either recreational or, uh, medicinal, they're both. They're both now, yeah, combined, yeah.
But, um. They don't have an allowance for a dispensary. So they would have to change that. And a lot of people aren't in favor of it. The board didn't come out pushing for it, but they let this guy talk about putting one in. And we'll see. Always interesting.
Thanks Dave, Jan?
I was, I had a meeting at Bethany Township last week. And, uh, I forgot to tell you, or I need to tell you that, um, there, we were passed out these papers last week about the, uh, tires that they were going to collect. Over at the fair, and that has been canceled. And I got a, a, a email on it, but I have not had a chance to read the whole thing, to find out what they're going to do at this point, do you know, Chris?
I had not heard that.
No, there's not canceled.
Wasn't?
No.
I got it.
Next meeting, the meeting coming up was canceled and then moved to the next week, that's all that was canceled.
That's all was canceled, okay. I thought that, uh, Al Dean, LD, Dean, I'm sorry, um, Al Dean, yeah, Al Dean. Uh, I, she said canceled, I just assumed they, that's what they canceled.
Just, just, we moved the meeting out a week.
Oh, okay.
There's a complex.
George, I did see that the paper said that it was going to be from three to six o'clock.
Yeah.
And I, I believe that Bill and Deandra, Deandra said that it was actually going to be from ten to three.
Ten to three, correct.
Okay.
So why they put it in there like that, but it's from ten o'clock in the morning.
Is, is it the same day?
On the sixteenth of September.
Yeah, that's what I meant, it was the same day.
Yeah.
I thought they had moved the day, so is from.
The date is not, September sixteenth.
Okay, and then it's from ten o'clock in the morning until three o'clock.
Afternoon, but it's by appointment only.
Okay.
You'll look at the flyer that you've got, and there's information on the flyer, get in contact. With the, with the soil conservation and they will make you an appointment.
I've handed out two of them already, but they were going to put it on Facebook and the city, um. So I still have the Alma to pass out unless she do it, or Tim does it. Um, okay, and then also we had the meeting at MMR, which Dave was there and, um. Um, that went really well, it was quick. And, um, we have two new people there, um, one was, um. One for ELC and one for nine one one, one is Dave and who was the other name? Mike, was it? I can't remember, I think it was Mike. I've got him wrote down, oh, I should have brought that too, anyway, that's basically it.
Well, I did want to add on that, uh, they're going to write a letter to, uh, Dan Morton, thanking him for his time.
Yes.
MMRs?
MMRs, yeah.
Hey. Out of Washington Township, they're still talking about windmills and those to the parks and, um, going to set a committee up to, uh. Want to set a committee within the, within the committee to see about what it takes to take in new parks. Um, they'd had a request from Alba Township to take their park over and, um, they seem to struggle with that a little bit, so. Set the committee up to talk to another committee. That meets. Alrighty.
Hey, uh, Sam, is that meeting at Park Springs tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow, yeah, five.
Five, okay. Okay.
Okay, considering it's new business, how are we doing on the attorney?
I believe that the DT rep is there.
Yeah, he's in the back room.
Okay, I thought you maybe were the energy somebody, okay, great. We're going to move you ahead so you don't have to stay here, no?
No, oh, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so why don't we do that right now?
It's something.
Perfect.
We're going to move down to, uh.
Two one.
Jay. Yeah, Jay one. Where a solar project, okay, alrighty, go ahead.
Alright, so I will, what I think I'll do is I'll start, I'll, uh, give a brief, uh, the, I'll, I'll talk about the decommission agreement briefly. Um, and if it's acceptable to the county board, they can move to approve of that, and then I think Teresa could speak to the PA one sixteen application. So. I'm Kyle O'Meara, I'm one of the attorneys that, um, the county has retained for land use assistance related to, uh, the. Essentially the DT solar project that it has been approved for North Star Township. One of the requirements in your solar ordinance, as part of your zoning ordinance, is a decommissioning plan as well as a decommissioning bond. In other words, a financial security to ensure that if for whatever reason DT did not remove the solar project. After its, um. Lifespan, that there would be funds available for the county to do so itself, so you wouldn't have an abandoned solar project essentially. The decommissioning agreement, if you are all, and I believe all of you, or at least a majority of you. Were around last July when I was before you for decommission agreement for the Heartland Farms Wind Project. The terms of this agreement are essentially exactly the same, except it is modified for, of course, a solar project and DTE rather than Invenergy. The amount of the bond here is three point five seven million dollars. The cost of decom, that, that decommissioning cost does not credit salvage value. In other words, it's not lowered by the amount that presumably the county could add if they, if they wanted to scrap the material, uh, scrap the material. The amount of the security every five years will go up with the rate of inflation or the producer price index. Every ten years, there will be a new decommissioning study to determine the cost of decommissioning the project and the bond would increase, uh, based on that study. Those are the highlights of the agreement, I'm happy to get into more specific details. If there are no, or answered questions from the, the board, if there are no questions, I think you could move to approve the, the agreement as presented.
Any questions on this decommissioning agreement? We've seen them on the windmills and, um, we've handled a few of them, we've handled, I guess, all of them, you know, with the farms. Um.
Moved to approve.
They moved.
Order.
And supported to approve the de-commission agreement, uh, any questions?
As for roll call.
Roll call vote? Got our names?
Just have to make sure I stagger you.
Oh.
Bunting.
Yes.
Gay.
No.
Owens.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. And so if you would like to come up here so you can run a YouTube thing or something, so.
I, I don't know if I was in front of this group or planning commission group before, um, last fall, but I'm Teresa, I'm here with DTE. Um, you have an application in front of you, one of the requirements of the solar project is that, um, any parcels of land that are. Uh, enrolled in PA one sixteen through M-DAR, um, can be suspended. So, um, we've worked with M-DAR to, um, to make sure that this application is a hundred percent complete. Um, in North Star Township, there was one parcel that we are going to be putting solar panels on that is enrolled in the, uh, PA one sixteen program. Um, so the suspension is different than if it were going to be taken out of the program. What happens is that M-DAR says wherever they are at, from whenever their agreement took into effect, um, it stops. At the completion of this, when you sign it, it will be put on pause until, um, the project is decommissioned. And then at that point, that parcel can go back into M-DAR, um, and, and not miss a beat. You know, they don't have to go back and pay their back taxes and that sort of thing, so it's not going away, it's just being suspended for the timeframe. So that's, that's the reason, um, there, I think it's on page four, um, that actually has that requires the clerk signature, um, if it's approved. Um, it's already been signed by, uh, Ed Oswald, who is the landowner for the parcel, it's been signed by him and, and the application's all been completed. We will deliver this to, uh, Lansing tomorrow morning, um, if it's, if it's, if it's approved, we'll deliver it to Lansing tomorrow morning. They take sixty days to do what they have to do, and then it's, and we can move forward with the, with that parcel into construction for the solar project. Any questions?
I guess for me, I, I looked at it today, I called some folks, I didn't understand suspension, I've been involved in a couple of parcels that, where the taxes had to be repaid. And, uh, I talked to our head of our planning commission and stuff like that, and she'd not heard of suspension either. But, uh, that's the way I understood it also, is that seems like these folks are in about forty years or something of this deal and, and it ends, they got five or six years left of it or something and. It'll just stop here, and then when this thing is done, they'll pick right back up and they'll have the five or six years that'll roll back on, so. The ones that I've been involved is where they canceled, paid taxes back, but, uh, this won't be like that.
That is, that is correct, that's correct. Um, and, and we didn't realize that this parcel, the landowner didn't even realize that, that it was still enrolled, so it was. That's probably why it wasn't discussed at the planning commission meeting at all with the solar project, because we actually didn't realize there was one parcel in North Star that was enrolled, um.
And I think years ago they did it for forty, fifty years.
Yeah.
Just a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions? Need a motion?
Make a motion that we approve. Or.
And move this supported, any other questions? All in favor, you want to roll call or?
I, I do have a question, I was trying to think how to ask you though on it. Um, this should have gone to the planning commission first before it came to us.
No, this, this, and I think Kyle might be able to. For this, yeah, it, it, there was discussion, trying to figure out if it was supposed to go to the planning commissioner or come to the board, and it was determined that it was supposed to come to the board, and I think Kyle, um.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner. This particular application for the solar suspension and to the chair's comments, um, I think it was only a few years ago where M-DAR. Determined that solar use is compatible with the PA one sixteen program and allowed, and provided for the suspension. This particular application requires approval by the local governing body, which is the county board of commissioners itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Carla and I, who's the head of the planning commission, thought because it was suspension, that's why it's come here versus if it was cancellation, then they would have been about repayments and stuff.
Yeah.
That's what we thought, I don't know if that's right.
Yeah, it depends, it really depends on, uh, there's a section dedicated to PA one sixteen and the statutory sections, it's fair, fairly extensive. And there are a variety of definitions, when it's a local governing body, when, when certain actions, what, who they need to be approved by, this particular one needs to be, be approved by the. When it's a local governing body, when when certain actions, what who they need to be approved by. This particular one needs to be be approved by the legislative body of the entity. So for example, when when these projects are in townships, the township board approves them similar to kind of when you have a financial obligation for the decommission agreement. Planning commission approves the land use. However, certain things uh have to go to the legislative body.
So let me get this straight. So they won't have to pay any taxes back, right?
No, they're just gonna stop wherever they are in the plan. And it seems like I seen it was a forty or fifty year plan and they're forty-five or forty-three years into it. There's maybe six or seven years left. So it'll stop today. If this thing runs twenty years, twenty years from now, they'll start it back up and they can still get the five years and the taxes have they taken out? My understanding of.
Okay.
That's the way I understand.
I think commission understanding of it too, as we spoke today.
Okay, that's good though.
Any other questions?
All in.
Commissioner Gay.
No.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes. Alrighty, anything else? Anything?
So Sheila, if if you could meet her at the administration so that I could get a copy of this, that way you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Oh, perfect. Not that I don't want to stay, but I do have another meeting that I'm going to this evening from here, so.
I have nothing else.
Thank you. So you guys decide that.
I did. I knew I was to sign. Hope you could maybe see Sheila, but Sheila, she should be watching. Yeah, thank you. So I could get a copy.
Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so flowers is done. Um, so G five with her. Yeah, we're down to um airport. J two. Where's J two?
The D H.
Couple there.
Contracts. There's three contracts.
Oh, I put them there. I put my other stuff on the spot. Okay, J two, three contracts for E H H S. See those there?
This is normal. We do it every year.
Every year.
It's just it's a normal course of business for us. Uh, Lori usually comes, but she probably had something to do tonight, but I can speak for her. She just it's it's something we do every year because they are located in Gresham County and we have to okay those contracts.
Yep, this runs through the childcare fund. I did just check them all out. All three of them are with the same contractors and it's the amount has been the same five years, I think now.
Yeah, nothing's changed. I make a motion that we approve those contracts.
We do one at a time?
Or if you want.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, we have one. Yeah, we'll do all three.
You're gonna do all three at once?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have object. I don't object to that at all.
That okay, Nick?
Support.
We've been supported to accept these contracts. Any other questions? All in favor?
I.
She carries. Okay, G three, the air conditioning for the shares. Office in Geofford was his house.
Is that what? I didn't.
Uh, jail cooling proposal. Whoa.
Good evening. So I uh just wanted to present this to you all. Basically, we have a network closet over the sheriff's office. It's currently not cooled. It's a very small enclosed area and the equipment in there is generating a lot of heat and is really heating that area up. So we had a uh heating and cooling company come out and take a look. We actually had two come out and take a look. Both recommended putting a standalone um unit in that closet to compensate for the heat and to condition the air and we want to do that so that we can keep that equipment operating at peak performance. We just put a a lot of video uh server equipment in there. So we want to keep that going for as long as we can and extend the life of it. So we got two two bids, one from Buford Plumbing and Heating, another one from Custom Heating and Plumbing. And uh I worked with Tony Miller on this project to put this together and he recommended just going with the low bidder, which would be uh custom heating and plumbing's uh option. It's just a lower end unit that he thought would serve that space well and the total cost was twenty-three hundred or two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And then we also would need to get an electrician to come in to run electrical for that unit and Tony estimated the cost of that to be about two hundred and fifty dollars. Alternatively, we could uh take care of the budget for this project on next year's capital improvement plan and do it then, but I if the board prefers to do that, but I really would recommend that we take care of this as soon as possible. Um because we want that equipment to stay working the way that it is, which is really bar right now, so.
Cool. And supported her move is support.
Sure.
To um contract with custom heating and plumbing for the twenty-three twenty-seven thirty or whatever um to put the air unit in as a splitter. Any questions?
And and two hundred fifty-four wiring, so twenty-six, twenty-eight together.
Yeah. Also, the question was raised whether it would be this year.
Uh, we need to do it as soon as possible.
Okay. But wait. Like he said, we just put a lot of video stuff in there. Yeah. Any other questions? The movement is supported. All in favor?
I.
I.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Any idea they can they get right on that? Matt? He's good.
He left, Jim.
I am not. Yeah, I'm not entirely sure because Tony was the one working with them, but I'll follow up.
Okay, alright.
And see what the schedule is for that.
Okay, good. Uh, J four, inter- uh intergovernmental agreement with the bright eradication and that was with Lafayette Township.
With Lafayette Township. And uh everything was in order and I would uh move that we enter into that intergovernmental agreement with Lafayette Township. Support or.
The move is supported to enter into the light eradication agreement with Lafayette Township. Uh, any questions? I got one question. Where did we end up with? You're gonna change some of those at the ending, how that works instead of having people who scale to just go and clean it up. Where are we at there?
So currently, our our blight ordinance, uh the end game for that, if they're not compliant, is that they would uh appear in our district court and they could possibly go to jail if they're not compliant with with the plan that has been put together between the judge and um the the person who's in violation. Uh, so Commissioner Smith is talking about is potentially converting that from a criminal offense to um having it be where the if they're not compliant, the judge would order the county to come in and to clean up that property, uh put it within compliance of the ordinance. And then the cost of that would then be placed onto uh the the tax bills of of the property owner.
I think that's a good idea.
Um, a a lot of models that you have looked at do have that instead of it being a criminal offense. And what I did, I I have spoke with uh our our community development department and and they do support that because they feel that our our program would be more successful and that it wouldn't drag out as long or the the complaints would drag out as long as they are now. Um I did have a chance to talk to Sumner Township about that because we did visit them specifically to talk about the blight program and their view on it was that they trust that the county will run this program the best way that can be that it can be done. So they did support that if we were to do an amendment to our ordinance. But I would need to, I I need to reach out to all of our participants right now that have I G A's.
Yeah.
Um, and I I plan to do that, you know, be with a phone call follow up to get each uh supervisors and townships uh uh
supported that.
Support of of converting that over.
So then we would just make a change, like a blanket change and have them all sign off?
They would have to adopt that again, correct?
Just with the change or whatever.
Yeah.
Or just adopt the change?
They would have to post it in the paper.
Okay.
Um, have a public hearing and then adopt it.
Yeah.
Because I guess their citizens are right to come and and discuss it with them before they vote on it.
I think the thought is is that if you take the guy to jail, he not cleared it up, now I don't have a job with these. I mean, you really versus saying you got the Tuesday to come and Wednesday, you're like, if somebody's coming in and cleaning this thing up and it's gonna be five grand. Put it on your taxes.
The only downfall on the other side can be you'd have to make sure that the unit is um funded enough to be able to do the cleanup. That. It's this way they used to do with abolition and different things like that in townships. So.
I don't think this unit will ever be funded. I mean, I didn't know if the money could come like out of delinquent tax fund money or something like that and then be repaid back to them with interest. Because you're gonna get the tax back and it'll be a lien on that property.
Would be possible to use the delinquent tax fund money?
That's what I was just asking her about.
You didn't hear what you said.
I was talking about the actual unit money to, you know, and then put it on taxable. That's how it used to be.
When you say the unit money, so we have.
The tax.
Oh. Okay.
Township.
They would fund the cleanup.
So, yeah, that's how.
Don't think that you're gonna go for that. I don't.
They don't have that kind of.
They don't have that kind of money.
Their taxable.
My feedback is that the townships would not support it fronting.
No. I know already. I can tell you that.
They they don't have funds.
Right.
So is there is there a chance of the delinquent tax fund? I mean, we're running, we're running two, three times over. Um if you have a four thousand dollar cleanup, whether it would be a situation where the delinquent tax fund would pay it, charge interest on it as a loan to either the township or whatever against that piece of property, be it encumbrance on that property.
Question, I'll look into that.
Well.
He would need to front it upfront. And then if it were to go delinquent, then the delinquent tax fund would refund.
Exactly. It would come back off if the the if the taxes went delinquent.
Right.
But we have separate town contract for each township that's in it for our blight ordinance. And if they, we put in them those contracts that they will be cleaned up, the county will fund it, but they will come back off of their taxes. And however that legally is to to write that, I think we're gonna be just fine. Because we pull it out of the delinquent tax fund, we can fix it. And then when they don't pay their taxes, then we go back the other direction on them. So.
That or if there was a sale.
That's what it's gonna get the money.
Yeah. But I think we ought to have a fair rate of interest charged on that too. We're putting money up on that. I mean, it's no different than us taking money out of there for the sewer fund or whatever.
Yeah.
The law does dictate what that would be for the delinquent tax fund. That would, we would not have to.
Right. We would have set it, but I I think that.
In front of the, front of the uh our council, but I think it's gonna be alright.
Yeah. And that's kind of how it's maybe would work. I don't know how you fix it to work that way, but. Alrighty. Okay, so we have a motion in support uh for Lafayette Township. All in favor?
I.
I.
Post. Okay. That's four or five. Okay, the airport resolution. We were talking a little bit about you have to set up a committee for the airport, like the veterans committee, um parks committee and stuff like that. So you need to get started on that and we're thinking that maybe we'd have a, she has to post it. We would have a meeting first of all in next month. Well, uh try to come up with the size of the committee. Well, maybe put some coolies out to some folks that are involved in 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 the airport now. You know, to see if we can find some interest and if not, then we would, we would reach out to the public for to fill the committee seats. We decided on five or seven or twelve or whatever the number would be. You know, something we want to be thinking about and try to decide on the size of it and then try to see about, I know a few folks that had some interest on it and when we were gonna take it over. But we we can't let this setback. We gotta get that rolling and get these folks up and working. So we're gonna do that next month and then we could talk about it if we want to do it maybe the first meeting of every month just to get it started. And we maybe would set a time up. Once we got a committee appointed to meet with them and kind of talk to them about some of our goals as the airport. Some of that that were involved in taking the airport over, what our thoughts were about how to run it. We have this study, could kind of go over some of that with them. So we'd have to probably post a meeting sometime for that, I guess, too.
We are working, currently working on the capital projects, the five-year plan for that too. That would be a really good um action item also to to keep you apprised of of what is coming in the future too.
So I I I was kind of thinking that meeting next month would just be really to get this thing rolling along and get it off off the ground. Yeah. Is that working for everybody?
So we're talking about three options here. The the first one would be.
That was my, that was just my idea, but I think all they want to do is just set this one.
This is September.
And then we will.
We can go from there and see how much.
I'll need a four o'clock then.
And really, you know, I don't know if we could even put it, you have to, would you have to separate it, have it separate as an airport meeting or do you put it as an agenda?
It would be separate.
It would be separate.
It'd be separate, okay. Because we are the airport authority, that's.
But we can still meet at four thirty and at the end of the meeting, go into the because it's the first meeting of the month, so it's usually the shortest meeting.
Yeah.
And if we just have our regular meeting and then go into an airport authority meeting, much like we're down, we're gonna do is the finance meeting.
So you want me to post it for five instead of four?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's let's meet at four thirty and so.
Yeah, because it.
And see, because it won't take long.
Same schedule. You don't have to think about it.
It won't take long.
No.
And.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll set it at the end of our next meeting.
May I have a motion?
We need a motion on it, you say so? You have a mo- uh
Don't.
Support, moves supported to set the airport meeting at the end of um our next meeting in September on the first, the end of the first meeting, whatever the date is. Yeah. Uh, J six, we have a resolution here. You just pass it on to everybody.
Yes.
So will we vote on that? We didn't vote, did we?
Oh, we didn't have one on the airport. We did. All in favor?
I.
Oops.
I'm a minute duration.
Just checking it, Jordan. Right there now, he passed.
So um so the next agenda item is to set the annual meeting for the um proposed budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four. Which I see I have a date on my paper. Um, it's so if I if we wait until September fifth, I'm not gonna have enough days to get it into the newspaper six days before the meeting. So if we can approve it so that um on September nineteenth, we have our public hearing. Um for the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's what resolution twenty-three, three oh three.
Thank you for doing that, Angie.
Or three oh three.
Make a motion that we approve resolution uh twenty-three dash three oh eight to set a public hearing for the budget to be held on September nineteenth at uh four thirty.
Is that the right date or is it?
That's correct. I'll double check, but uh.
It is nineteenth.
That that's a regular board.
That's correct.
Be a regular board meeting, but that would be the first thing we discussed is the public hearing for the budget. We do this every.
Every year.
Here. Do uh people come? It's not generally. But you you do have, you have to offer certainly.
Yeah. So the move supported, ordered to um have this public hearing. Uh, any questions? All in favor?
This is.
Alright.
Have this budget done by then?
You don't. Well, you will have it.
You better have it done.
Yes, that's the last.
The last. Yeah. Uh, all in favor?
I.
I.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, it's round J's.
I know we're gonna go back into to uh a uh meeting for the our union negotiations, which is closed session. But I would move that we go right into finance and then come back to that.
Let's do that. We need to do that first. Yeah, we have consideration of any unfinished business first.
Good.
Okay, and then K one, we have the budget review. Let's get the, you want to hear, you want to do that?
We're gonna do that. We're gonna do a real quick budget update.
Okay. I just didn't want to get caught up in the the other.
Yep. Yeah, we'll we'll go to the finance next.
Right.
Post.
Okay.
So I handed out a packet that I'm gonna run through with you real quick. Uh, I'm gonna update you on where I'm at with the uh general fund budget. And then I'm also gonna run through the fee schedules and if you ask any question about the fee schedules, um typically the add-ons in the budget, the interest the board the most is the capital projects. Typically, the add-ons in the budget, the interest aboard the most is the capital projects. Uh, listing and then the fee schedules. Um, so I did include the fee schedules today. Uh, the very first, I did not include the detail of the general fund because I have, uh. Probably added only like ten departments onto it. There wasn't a whole lot more detail. I will get the detail to you next, um. Next meeting. And if you would like to see detail on any of it, just contact me and I can send it over to you or you can come in and visit and we'll go over it. But here is my estimation of what we think that the general fund is gonna look like. Um, there are a couple of departments that are federally funded. That we are collecting the federal grant documents. Below them in right now, they are highlighted on there, they are not finalized. Um, for yours, you don't see the yellow, I did not print it in color, I apologize, but you can see that they are shaded a little bit. Um, also, one additional thing to consider is that. Um, any elected officials or unions that are currently negotiating or possibly get a raise that is not included in here yet. I do not budget anything that is not set in stone. That way there's no, um, people that are upset if my estimations are not exact. Uh, but the big thing that I wanted to communicate to you. Was the total for the general fund, um. By estimation, I expect that we are going to. Just be up slightly, uh, fourteen point four six million this year. The estimation for the upcoming year, fourteen point five million. Again, that does not include some of the raises for the unsettled negotiations. But overall, I am very pleased with the minimal increase in costs.
When you, when you say you don't have anything for like the raises, like the stuff we're negotiating, um. What stuff like from forty four north, the, the health insurance and all that's been in there?
Yes, that has been built in.
That's been built in. So we're just really talking like. Raises, we're just talking about the extra dollar for that.
Uh, I have.
No benefits.
I have built-in contracts that have increased. For example, if your contract goes up, I built that in. The five point one percent for, um. Healthcare, short-term, long-term, we know that those are increasing next year. Uh, we know that medical services in the jail have gone up because. That has been built in. We know that gas is four dollars a gallon right now. Uh, compared to, I believe, last year when we were budgeting, it was around three twenty five-ish. Um, so all of, all of the increases that we are aware of are built in. These will be, uh, I, I do allow director and department head feedback all the way up to. The time that we approve, um. And I will tell you, when I present this budget in its entirety to you, the first meeting of September. If a change is made by myself or somebody else or a department head, I track every change. So you will know between the time that I, I present it to you and the time that, um, you approve it, you'll know every little change. And have the option to strike it if you so choose. It's never happened, but I, I always want to make sure that. You know, I'm not trying to slip something in there.
One, one thing.
Yes.
Um, in fact, uh, under, uh. Would be, uh, mental health. That would be mid Michigan health. That number is mid Michigan health.
Appropriations to other agencies?
Yeah, mental health. You've got mental health and it's not mental health, it's health, it's mid Michigan Health Department.
Okay, uh, we do have a mental health, um. Uh, district, it's a district for, um. Specialty court. And so we have a drug court, we have OCC, we have sobriety court. And mental health court. So what you are talking about is our two hundred thousand dollar appropriation annually.
Uh, it's closer to three hundred this year. Uh, for mental health, I'm talking about health departments.
Health department. That's going to fall under in the very last section, one oh one dash nine nine zero. Appropriations to agencies.
All right.
So that gets lumped in.
That's a large number and I thought, well, that's what we get.
I have to ask you a question on that. Um, it used to be a set amount of money that we gave to them. Did you guys change that?
It changes every year.
Yes.
That changes every year to the budget.
It gets negotiated. Negotiated.
Because there was an agreement many years ago. That the county would give them X amount of dollars. It was an agreement. If that agreement was broken, which sounds like you did, then it leaves us on the hook. For any money that's owed at the end of each year. Uh, let me call Carolyn nearly an Asperg.
No, I, uh, well, you can, but I, I know we're on, we're on the right foot.
We have two commissioners on that board, right?
No, just one.
No, we have two.
You're on mental health court?
Oh, not mental health, health department.
No, not mental, I'm not talking about mental, I'm talking about the board of health.
Oh, board of health, okay. I'm talking about.
Our, our figure this year was over about three hundred and ten thousand. I saw that three hundred and ten, I wanted to make sure. What category were we talking about?
Okay, George, you're on the mental health court. Did that one change? Okay. It's very important that we never change that.
That, that does not change.
Okay.
Yeah.
The one that you said is gonna be a million dollar shirt, which one was that?
Mental health.
Mental health. What became mental health? They're so close to the.
I think I got them confused too, when we were all talking about them.
Well, they're different.
Did you say there's three here? You said mental health, health department? What was the third one?
Well, we were talking about, uh, specialty courts that we operate here, so.
So, right. Cause that figure is really close to what we've given to the health department this year.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
It is.
When I saw that, I went, whoa.
Well, I, I do have, uh, multiple, uh, special revenue funds budgeted, but I was unable to get them summarized for here. Uh, the sheriff and I did have an opportunity to, um. Meet and, and finalize, uh, his budgets, although I, I do offer him, uh, you know, the, the next month to look at that. And I do want to just point out also that he has not finalized, the sheriff has not finalized, uh, the Ithaca contract yet. So that's why the Ithaca contract is highlighted in yellow. It's, it's subject to change, still reviewing some costs for that.
I'll give you the idea, a chance to look at it earlier today, or second video.
Yeah, I'm just gonna really quickly go through, uh, the fee schedules, um. Every summer we offer, um, the department heads, we sit down with them to review their fee schedules. Becky Clark in accounting helps me do this department. That updated their fee schedules for the upcoming fiscal year was animal control. And let me see if I can't get that pulled up. So, if you have any questions or if you have any directions with the schedule, I'd be happy to take them.
I have a question already. So it was twenty five dollars for a male and now for a license, it's fifty, is that right?
It's a late fee.
A late fee, okay. Hey, I didn't see that. That's right in front of me. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris or any questions on these fees and stuff?
Okay, is this the same, what was last year's? I don't recall. Was it the same site?
Animal, animal control.
I don't think the licenses went up. Let me pull it up real quick. And if you like, I can address this. In the, in the finance also, if you can, if you can sort of look this up. If that works.
We'll do that in financing. Okay, so let's reassess this meeting right now and then we'll go into finance. And then we'll go into exactly session after that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back out of finance and then. You need a motion to go into, uh, finance? We'll support it, it's only a finance meeting.
Hey. Good. We'll get going as soon as Chris can get them done.
Yep, give me one second to pull up my. So I am going to go ahead and. Start with the finance report. Uh, again, we have not had any drain prepayments. Uh, requested from us. It feels like this year it's definitely slowed down. Um, we did budget two hundred thousand for, for the year and we're still sitting at a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Um, our ARP funds and project list, um. One thing that I need to, uh, do is I, I need to get the project list updated in before you so that you can see the, the status of the projects. Um, I know I used to do that every meeting. I need to start doing that again. Uh, we're at just under four point three million expended out of seven point nine million. Uh, so we have, uh, reached that halfway point. Um, the entire amount has been encumbered in the last month, in the month of July. We had a, the seventy six thousand dollar distribution to the Ithaca fire department. Uh, the Ithaca fire department upgrade up, um. Ithaca fire department. Used their allotment for a fire truck or.
Down in Perrington.
Um, part of the GISA.
Part of their authority.
Um, we had forty four thousand dollars in county approved IT apparel improvements. Um, recently in this month, uh, the Elmo Fire Department, they requested their seventy six thousand dollar allotment too. And they updated their, uh, oxygen tanks and ox- oxygen masks. Um, they spent a, a little over a hundred thousand dollars on that and, and used their allotment for that, um. Like our, our MERS pension, our MERS Pension Trust Fund report, I did include that in communications. In, uh, the original agenda. I did contact our. Area manager, Marnie Daggett, um, she has not reached out back to me, but I will get her in front of this board to ask, answer. Any pension trust fund or OPEB trust fund, uh, questions that you may have and explain the actual report that was in your packet today. Uh, to you, um, so it's a, a, a fun meeting, learning about our investments and. Seeing how aggressive or passive they are. Our MERS OPEB balance as of August ninth. Uh, on the calendar year, we were up seven percent, um. On the contrary, the S and P is up seventeen point two percent, um, on the year, the calendar year. Uh, we do have two point one million dollars of seed money that we put into this MERS fund. Uh, and today we have two point two one eight. We have not tapped into this OPEB fund, uh, to pay for our OPEB expenses yet. Our OPEB expenses on an annual basis are still, are, are around. Between two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars, depending on the year that we have. And we have been able to absorb that in our annual budget. Um, and as, un- until we get to where we are one hundred percent funded in this trust fund. Uh, it is my preference to continue to, uh, fund as we go because that. Can also be viewed as an annual contribution to this fund. And, um, we, we do keep that money in our bank account where it, it is, uh, earning interest at this time too. So. That is. The finance update. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our cash balances for the end of July.
Any questions for Chris before we move on?
Real quick, we got three million dollars in the ARP fund studying in a bank or someplace.
Yes.
So we're getting five points on that. It's a hundred and fifty grand.
Yes.
Does that stay in the ARP fund or does that come to general fund, that hundred and fifty grand?
Currently, the interest is in the ARP fund, but it is unrestricted and accessible to the board of commissioners. I do track the interest in the ARP fund.
But I was just saying, when you had like zero encumbrances last, we really have extra money. We have some money in there.
Yes, but it does not need to, once, in, any interest earned on the ARP funds is, is not, it can be ruled.
Unrestricted, we don't have to.
Right. Okay, I just, but we got some.
Yes, I, yes.
Yeah, we're making money.
Hundred and fifty grand.
Chris, I think you should make this smaller so we could. Put more on a page. I'm just kidding now. I can hardly see it.
And I know, I love this. I got this nice little zoom in feature here on the computer.
I can see it. I think my eyes are.
Oh, thank you. There's. Yeah, okay, that's last year's. Anybody else wants to see what the animal control fee schedule is from last year? Okay, so, um. You know, we see a slight dip in the general fund, uh, from June to July. You'll see that historically, uh, July is, is a, a month that we, we do spend down our balance. Uh, starting in August and September, that's when we're gonna start to see our general operating tax collection start to hit the bank. So, uh, from here on out, we should see, uh, increases in the general fund through the end of the fiscal year.
Can I ask you a question? I want to ask the question. Um, I've been hearing, are we gonna have to pay back the COVID nineteen money? What we have left?
No.
Well, if we don't have any left, I mean.
Recovery fund, what does that mean then?
That is what that is. So what, what the new rule?
Pay back what we've already spent. I meant, they were talking about, they, you know, you listen to the. Congress or Senate or whatever, they talk about, they should recall the money that's left over from COVID nineteen. I just wondered if you were gonna.
I think that's what schools and stuff. That's all the schools, that's not this. This is the ARP money that was designated. We've already committed to all of that money being spent.
Okay.
They did make a, a new rule where they wanted to see you have it committed by the end of this calendar year.
They moved that up.
So, um.
Twenty twenty-three, it's gotta be spent by twenty twenty-six.
Yes, but the other timeframes are still the same. I don't remember exactly what the carrot on the end of the stick was to have. It committed by the end of this calendar year, but we are in compliance with everything and we will not be sending any back.
Okay.
First, we're quick. Without any other questions on the cash balance, I'd give you a moment to take a look. And our bills.
Do we, uh. We pay lawyers to, for the indigent criminals to.
We do. We have a, a significant amount of payments that go out to the lawyers, um. And the majority of that is through the indigent defense program.
Lawyers for any other reason?
Well, um, the lawyer that we spoke with today, I, uh, will be paying them, uh, through, uh, through, through our payable system. Um, if we ask for any legal advice for anything that we might be working on, uh, through the course of our work. Yes, we would be billed. By a lawyer, but ninety nine point nine percent of what you see does, is run through the indigent defense.
What's the fleet card program?
Fleet card is, um. is the gas card, um, company that we use. So.
We're the biggest vendors, Sheriff's Office.
Yeah. So each car is assigned a, a gas card. So when, when the county employee is using it, they can use, they can fill it up.
Hey Mike, is, uh, with the gas going up to $4 a gallon now, does that probably really affect your budget, doesn't it?
We had budgeted for it in the current budget. Chris and I worked out the other day and we budgeted it for it for the next.
I heard that. Did I just hear something on the news with the last two days about somebody else is going to cut us off from oil? That, that will even spike it up higher.
So I think overall, uh, the sheriff and I estimated it would cost about 25 or $30,000 more next year if this price, uh, maintained. And that's because he, he has to keep his vehicles on 24/7. Well, whoever is assigned to a vehicle is typically running them for the entire shift.
Are you down any, uh, any employees?
Yeah.
How many?
A lot.
A lot. Um, yeah, sorry about that.
Be happy to.
I'm saying, you should check register.
Take any questions. But I think we're, we're reviewing, are we reviewing the check register now?
That's what, that's what I tried to.
Yeah, I'm going to give you, because I have several that I marked. I was just curious, what's EPS?
EPS. They maintain security systems all over. Um, and I know we had to have them work on our, our back security entrance door to the courthouse recently also. By any of the alarms. They also did the panic buttons also, right? And they did some work on that.
And I have a question for the sheriff. Satellite tracking of people, that mean like if somebody, like for instance, I'm working at this, a new school.
OCC, so when they put a tether around them. It's satellite tracking for people. They want to know where they're at for certain crimes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, here's one. Maple Rapids Public Library. That sentence.
It's the most recent one. It was penalized.
It's what?
About $7,500. So it would have been their annual distribution.
Yeah, but they're in Platte County, aren't they?
But their library district goes in there, our county.
Yes.
Oh, it does?
Library districts don't necessarily.
Like, it's like schools.
That's, my wife goes over.
Thank you for their.
Thank you. Oh, I had a bunch circled here, but I kind of think I figured them out. Okay, how about underground security company? What's that one?
Uh, they are a record retention company. Uh, so there's a lot, there, there's some records that were required to keep 50 years. Some records were required to keep over 100 years. Some we cannot get rid of, um, first, some of the ones that we have to keep for a very, very long time. Sometimes we contract out them to be stored elsewhere because we have a limited amount of space.
Okay. Well, most of these, I think, what's A P A A M?
Hmm.
The 5,000.
That is, um, that is through the prosecutor's office. It is an annual, it, it's their prosecutors of something, Association of Michigan dues.
Okay, so you're getting pretty good at this. Okay.
Elmo Public Library, that's a.
It's by population.
By population?
Yep.
Population of the of the district.
Of the district.
The district. Yeah, Elmo, Elmo Public Library District. Or it's the public library, or the St. Louis Public Library, or the Maple Rapids, it's all districts.
Real group LLC, what is that?
They are the contractor that is working with Terry to clean up, um, the accounting.
Okay. Okay, that's enough. I, I'll ask if there's anything else later.
Okay. All right, then we can, uh, move on to the review of the revenue and expenditure report.
Any more time? Yeah, we'll move on. Hey, Gary Porter. On Terry.
I told you last meeting that I would be attending the MACT conference this last week. I did do that from Monday until Wednesday. We did have conversation about the excess funds, the committee that's working on that stuff. Um, treasurers have a saying, 83 different counties, 83 different ways. And they are still working on it. They're getting closer, but they have not come, they haven't finalized it yet. So I told you I would report back on that, but they have not gotten anything set in stone yet, but they are still working on.
This for the blank of tax.
Mm-hmm, for the excess funds, the report that, right, for the policy that we have.
Side of de- declaring what the
variable that.
excess would be, is, are there other things that they're having problems coming to an agreement with?
Um, they didn't really say, they just said there are a lot of different ways that the different counties are doing it. So they're trying to get it all so that everybody can agree to it and it'll work for everybody.
Okay.
That's what they said. Um, but they are still working on it and they will let us know. I'm keeping an eye on the listserv because that, they'll put information out there, but after the last meeting, after the conference, there hasn't been anything yet. So and then I came back and we had our first, uh, annual property tax sale this year. Um, all the properties sold but two, there are, and which is not uncommon. There, there are two vacant lots that did not sell, but I do have another sale September 29th. So last year, the ones that didn't sell it, the first one sold at the second one. So that, that's where we are right now with that. We have had one and it went pretty well. And, you know, as far as sales, so everything sold too. So, um.
Are your lots in the country or in the city?
We've got, we had, it was both. The one that, uh, we have is a, a vacant lot in Wheeler, and then we've got a vacant lot in Alma. The one in Alma had been purchased at my first sale, I think, and he didn't want it, tried to give it back. Um, but then he just didn't pay taxes, so we got it back. So. But my, um, reports were included in your packet. Does anybody have any que- any questions on those?
I do have a question. Okay, let me explain this whole thing. Remember last, last meeting or the last month, I asked you about, um, I, this is what I'm understanding, that, um, Pine River Township sent their money in for their taxes. And apparently what happened, that money wasn't dispersed like it was supposed to. And that's where the $400,000 came up that the R E S D was short. How about the rest of the, did they make up the rest for, um, cause anybody that had a millage would have also gotten some of that money, like Commission on Aging, Library, Parks and Rec, MSU Extension. I couldn't remember all of them.
Well, that was last settlement year because we don't collect for R E S D anymore by resolution that.
Yeah, but I mean, the money that came in from parks, I mean.
From Pine River. It was a little bit late and, um, that usually washes out at a certain time so that when they asked for it, we looked and it was in the R E S D fund, but that's, there was no other monies that had come in late because that was just the R E S D distribution that had come in late. And then it, it went out to R E S D as soon as.
Doesn't the taxes that come in from Pine, yeah, Pine River, those taxes that come in, isn't some of those taxes go out to anything?
They do. Mm-hmm, they do.
They all got paid.
Yes, they did. Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wondered about that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Terry? I do then.
Okay.
So further ado, I will make a motion that we close our finance meeting and return to the regular session.
We move towards we go back to the regular session. Terry?
Hey, I just wanted to say one thing. It doesn't have to be in, um, finance. I was looking through this, I see Commission on Aging. I was very, very impressed with all of the grants that they get. It was 60, over $60,000, almost $61,000 in grants that they wrote. They were all small grants, but wow, that's a lot of work. I have to stop out there and tell.
Our finance department said.
Oh, did you write the grants for?
Well, uh, the area agency writes the grants. We just need to provide them with a budget.
Oh, that's great. Anyway, I was very impressed with that. I couldn't believe that, I mean, you look at how many times money came in. It was quite a few times. So thank you for your work on this too.
Think we need a motion.
And make a motion that we pay the bills.
Pay the bills for the finance committee, the finance meeting. Board. Uh, motion made to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Hey, any initial public comment? Anybody out there, Matt?
Nope, nobody's out there.
Yeah. At this time, we're entertaining mostly going to, uh,
I'm moving session. Go into closed session. Purpose to talk about union negotiations.
Or. Who's supported going to closed session? Uh, all in favor?
I. Was the one that said I.
Off post.
Sheila, thank you for doing that. You're right on the ball.
Action items. You, Matt? Okay, I hear. Matt, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
We're, we're not going to have any action items. You probably could sit down, Chris, but.
Okay, I will get it disconnected. Thanks.
You know how to shut this, somebody knows how to shut this off?
People do it.
Oh, you can do it right now?
Yep, I'll do it.
Okay.